This is Tuesday, August 5th in the year 2025. Charlton's Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. So, everyone that is petitioning tonight, in order for our board to grant relief, if we decided to grant relief on your petition, I have to have four fifths of all. There's a five-member board. I have to have four people vote in a yea if we're gonna vote for the commission, and I only have three people here tonight. So, I'm gonna open the meeting. We can hear your petitions. I have to have one of the absent members or both the absent members. What they can do is they can watch the video, get the information, and then they can sign something that they're up to speed. And then the next meeting that we have, then they could, then they'd be available to vote. We could do it that way. So, that's what we're gonna end up doing tonight. So, unfortunately, I don't have enough to, you know, any applicant to start that. And we're gonna, that's the way we're gonna end up going tonight. So, I'll start with first one, 116 Nugget Drive, PMZ Development LLC. How you doing?
Good.
Good. Good to see you.
Still.
So, just let us know what you're looking for and why we should grant relief on it.
Okay. Jason DuBois from DC Engineering Survey for PMD Development. This property is 116 Nugget Drive. It's 10,000 square foot lot. Currently has a two-bedroom house on the property. They're proposing to demolish the existing house and rebuild a new two-bedroom house within the setbacks. You can see, well, it's hard to see, I guess, a little bit on display, but you can see the old house.
Yeah.
Inside there. That old house is, it's, it's within, it's outside of the setbacks. So, we're proposing, you know, basically to push the house into the middle of the property. It's riprojed, right? It's probably closer to the same. Will happen anywhere on the new setback system as well.
Yeah. He's just asking for a special permit, right?
Just a special permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know if you guys have looked at that row or at all. In my opinion, this is like totally, if he's asking for a special permit, has to be the same character. This is unlike, well.
Can't they keep, keep a wall up and just rebuild it?
Well, the proposed house will be a better situation because it'll meet all the setbacks.
Right now, it's still falling on the setbacks. You kept it that way, right?
Yeah, but, uh, I mean, that's, yeah, it's, uh... Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, um, does anybody have any questions about it? Jason?
Nope.
Bobby have any questions? Yeah, I think this is totally in line with what that street does. It's right across from, uh, the lake there, the pond. All the other houses are like around that same size. I think it's totally in harmony with the neighborhood. All right. You good, Jason?
Yeah.
You wanna hear from, uh, does the zoning enforcement officer have any comments?
Oh, of course I do, sir.
Yeah.
Kurt Meskis, zoning enforcement officer, if I may, the usual package for the board. I'll give one to the property owner here. And I have a couple extras if anybody in the audience needs one. So, as the applicant has described, this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. In the area and frontage, it does have an existing dwelling on it. The locus is shown on the first page. There are a number of small lots in that neighborhood. It's Nugget, Nugget Lake. The house shown here is the subject house. It is a little bit dilapidated and doesn't seem to have been lived in for a couple of years. Um, it does have a piece of property across the street from it that's disconnected from it that has a garage on it. That's for two.
I was wondering about that. They're not, you're not doing anything to the garage at this point, are they?
No.
Even with the same maybe?
And then there's a, there's...
Maybe, keep it the same dollar.
Well, they might side it, you know what I mean?
Sorry, Kurt.
That's all right. There, there's another ranch to the left of it that's a little bit overgrown. There's a nicer ranch to the right of it that was rebuilt or redone a number of years ago. And then there's a house across the street at 113 Nugget Drive that this board granted special permits probably 15 or so years ago. Similar sort of situation, an existing camp that was dilapidated.
All right. Do we have any abutters or members of the public that have any questions or comments on this? All right. Uh, is this one, do I need to ask for a continuance on this one? Am I up against the, I am. We have to decide on when the next meeting is gonna be, I think.
Well, so, we're coming up on having to open the hearing. You still have like 39 days to make a decision.
On the, on this, is this the closest one that we have?
Yes, it is.
All right. So, I, if you guys are available, when you guys are available?
Whatever.
How about you? I can't do the week of the 18th. I can't do August 19th. But every other week I could probably do. I don't know if you guys want. All right. So, you wanna do the, you wanna, do you wanna do the last week in August?
We don't know what the other guys do.
No.
Yeah, we'll have to talk to them.
We'll have to talk to them. I'd like to do either the last, the last week in August.
The last Tuesday in August is the 26th, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The first Tuesday in September is September 2nd, which is the day after Labor Day.
Yeah.
You have to, you have to continue to a date certain. You can't continue to an unknown date.
So, what do you wanna do? You wanna do the last week in August or the first week in September?
Or you can go to the 9th of September because you can, you know, continue the hearing. Because if a continuance is not granted, if the applicant does not, um, agree to a continuance, then the board...
Well, I don't have to have them agree to a continuance at this point. I can just vote on a continuance. And then if we get to that, then I need it in writing. I'm still, I'm still within the time period, correct?
When's 39?
Everybody's around.
You think so?
So, where, where the 5th, 7, 14, 21, 28 days would be September 2nd. So, September 9th would be...
37.
35.
Yeah.
35, and I think you have 39, but she's gotta check.
Okay, the two members resign this summer.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
You have until the 18th of September.
So, you could do the 9th. Your, it's your choice, you know, now you're up to... The 26th of August, the 2nd of September, the 9th of September.
You wanna do 2 or 9? I mean, the 1 is fine with me. 2 is fine with me.
It is fine.
You wanna do 2? Let's do 2 and let, I don't wanna get right to the end. So, unfortunately, we gotta continue to the 2nd. So, motion to continue the meeting until September 2nd?
Motion to continue the meeting until September 2nd.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, we'll do that. We'll be able to vote.
Okay.
I, I don't see any reason why, if there's an issue here, we would vote tonight if I could.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
Sorry about that, guys.
Yep.
All right. All right. Thank you. So, next, Dimitri, 48 Stevens Park Road. Thank you.
Uh, this is a petition to renovate...
Do you just state your name for the record?
Sure, no, sorry. My name is Philip Burnick.
Okay.
An architect, uh, so landscape architect.
Yeah.
Designed for this project. The owner seeking to, uh, expand, renovate the existing cottage, which is a two-bedroom cottage, and expand it slightly in two areas without changing the setbacks of their existing. It's non-conforming, there's just a front yard setback. We're not changing that. Uh, the side yard here is 8.3. We're gonna actually enclose an area that's a deck right now. So, that's not really an expansion there. It's already, already built on. And then there's an expansion here, which is an open space, but maintaining the same setback here, which is about 11 feet.
Okay.
Here's, here's, let's see what the roof looks like. Um, we're gonna be putting, you know, re-stretching the roof a bit so we're gonna add a loft base up above it.
Okay.
This area here is roughly just, it's like 20, 30 feet. It's already developed. That looks like this. This is that area that's underneath an existing deck. So, the area that's back in here would be the area that would be, would be basically changed from the...
Can I, can we put this into the file?
You can, yes.
Okay.
I can also, this is intended to digitally, but you can have that.
So, you're gonna take all this stuff out right here?
Yes, we're, that's underneath the deck. We're not, the footprint of the deck will remain the same.
Uh-huh.
But the area is just back of that deck. The deck kinda wraps around the corner of the house.
Okay.
And so, that, we're gonna build that in. Right now, there's no, this, the house sits below the street level.
Yeah.
So, they wanna put a stairway in that's roughly level with the street and then fill in some of the area in the former house.
Okay.
And so, that, that takes up some additional space. There's also no stair that goes between the, the, the main floor and the basement.
Yeah.
So, we kinda need the extra space to that. Put a bathroom on the, uh, you know, a better bathroom on the first floor.
Okay.
So, that, this is that other corner. This is where we'd actually be filling it in. This, this is a sort of garage, just not really accessible by vehicle. I think these are boats or something like that. So, this would be filling even with the, uh, with the house here.
With the existing house.
From this corner. There's the deck out here that would stay and be basically in the same position.
Okay.
So, that, that's the nature of the change. Would comply with the setback requirement from the, from the rear yard lot, so...
So, really, on the either side lot, you're not going to be...
Extending past the existing setback.
So, the existing, whatever the setback is right now for the existing structure, you're, you're gonna stay flush with that on both sides. It's not gonna get more, you're not getting closer on either end than you are right now.
That's correct.
Okay. And you're asking for a special permit and a variance, correct?
Yes, that's what, I'm sorry, it is required.
All right. And this is no other, like, to, to do any kind of renovation on this, on this property, just wouldn't be no other room given the way that the house is sitting right now on the property?
Right. It's a, it's, well, it's cottage and then anyone they give to a residence. So, in that case, they, you know, that's why they need the additional space. But yeah, there isn't any other space, so...
Okay. Jason, do you, Bobby have any questions for them?
Nope.
Not at all?
I mean, the only space is compliance to the rear yard.
Right.
That's exactly what we are.
Right. You're in the rear yard.
We're still compliant with the rear yard requirement.
Yeah.
No change to the signs.
Okay. All right. No questions for them? No issues at all? I think they're gonna try to keep the same, according to the map here, the same setback areas that's already in existence, so it's not gonna get more.
There'd be no change, it would be nicer.
No. All right. You wanna hear from Mr. Meskis? We're gonna continue this to the same date, but...
Understood.
Kurt Meskis, zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner. Anybody else? So, uh, as we deal with the lakes around town, we have lots of lots that are small. This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, lacking sufficient area and frontage to be a conforming lot. At this time, the applicant applied to, um, modify the existing structure that's shown on page 2, um, to enlarge it and fill in a couple of squares on it. As he has indicated, it's also going from a single-story house to a two-story house is the plans that were submitted. To the right of the house is a vacant area and another smaller camp. To the left of the house is a small camp similar to this. Um, and across the street is a vacant lot, um, and a garage. And we've dealt with this area before. There's, uh, some houses down the street, further down the street that came before this board for special permits to change or to extend. There's some houses, and one house that we've dealt with repeatedly, further down the street, so it's, you know, just defining that the change, alteration, extension is normal detrimental to the...
To the neighborhood, to the neighborhood. Is, is there other truth, there are other cottages that we've approved special permits to go second, two stories in that street?
In some respects, it's almost like one and a half stories.
Cause of the slope.
It's built into the roof line. So, that, you know, like, I'm not talking about a lot of two stories outside of the town. Everything is stuffed into the attic, right?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, do we have any, um, abutters or persons of interest that have any questions or comments on this? Do we have any, um... We'll go through the list. I didn't do that in the other one, but I should probably do this.
There is, there's also an appeal period, so obviously they'd like to get instructions started.
Yeah, if I had, if we had four people tonight, we'd be voting, but I can't, yeah, we don't have four. So, um, anybody, we've heard from the zoning enforcement, building inspector, anyone from the planning board, conservation, town accountant, town clerk, selectman's office?
We have them before conservation.
Oh, you have, yeah, just if they have any comments. I'm just doing the roll call. Yeah. Assessors, collectors, border health, senior center, economic development, school department, police, fire? Nobody? Okay. Does anyone make a motion to continue this hearing until September 2nd?
Make a motion to continue the September 2nd.
2nd.
Motion 2nd, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll see ya.
Would you like me to leave these materials?
Just give it, the pictures and everything so the other board members can be brought up to speed. That would be great.
Anything that he presents to the board has to be kept as part of the record.
Yeah. So, that way they can have everything. I do appreciate that.
I'm gonna take the larger copy off the board.
No, we need to have that too.
Yeah, I'm gonna take it off the board.
Oh, that's fine, yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, you keep, go along with the meeting.
All right. Next stop, P&amp;P General Contractors, 318 Southbridge Road. Who's up?
We don't feel...
I thought P&amp;P was supposed to be here.
Are they not here?
I don't see anybody.
We'll, we'll scour the building in case they're in a different room.
Is there one for a shed in?
Yeah, a 20 by 40 foot shed at 318. It doesn't meet the qualifications, however, so, by people in each area.
Peter, he's the owner.
I don't know.
I think we've denied Robert McCauskey.
You might know him as Bobby Junior. McCauskey? How many, when, when do we get this application for P&amp;P?
1169. That's the one that's, like, it's kinda... It's a red building, I think it's set up on a hill. If question two from Charlie Moore, or is that tied out with someone over there, maybe?
I had a phone conversation with the applicant. He's 15 minutes away, so I...
We'll go to the next one and then come back. All right.
There's a delay.
He's on his way.
Okay.
All right. Van Hy, Vaughn Hyder. 78 Jennings Road. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Just state your name for the record?
Yeah. Uh, Rip LeBlanc, here for the owners. They asked me to come. They couldn't make it. They built a new house on Jennings Road.
Okay.
It was a wall built, stone wall on the property line. And it's not allowed to have a wall. Supposed to be a five-foot setback, and it's not. And they don't have room to move the wall because it's too close to the house. They have to have pitch away from the house, so they're kinda stuck and looking for relief for the, uh, five-foot offset for the wall.
So, what was the wall? Did, what, did you, you built the house?
I built the house, somebody else did the site work.
Oh, yeah. The wall was there when you built it?
Uh, the wall was installed as we were building it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And it's right on the, it's on their property.
Yeah.
It's on the property line. It's supposed to be five feet off. It can't be moved five feet closer to the house because they won't get pitch away from the house for the water.
Is, is the pitch, the wall, is it, it's holding...
So, there's a, there's a house here.
Yeah.
Then the ground slopes away.
Yeah.
From the house. And then there's a wall here.
Yeah.
And then there's land and another house here.
So, it's, it's holding soil or whatever.
Soil.
From the, from the...
Neighbors.
Or from the neighbors to, on, to this?
On to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that place is on individual plans? It's not, didn't have like a site plan for the whole, whole development?
Hmm, it did, but it didn't have a wall on it, and a wall was needed.
Gotcha. It still falls.
Did, did, did they do that as like part of like the septic or something like that when they did it?
No, it has nothing to do with the septic. The, the ground, the height difference from one house to the other was enough that it needed...
So, that other house is a little bit higher up than, than this house?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yep.
Is, are you thinking it's as functional as it is, is for aesthetics? Or is it more aesthetics than function?
Uh, I would say more function than aesthetics.
Oh, yeah. It's not a good-looking wall?
They wouldn't have done it unless they...
Uh, no, actually, there's a picture of it. It's not, it's a nice wall. It's big stones.
Yeah.
I think it's a nicer wall, but... There's a picture of it in there.
I didn't see one.
I didn't see one. No. But I find it standardly, without the wall, they'd have to backfill to kinda make the land meet, and it wouldn't give the drainage from the house. Is that right?
Yeah. You, you wouldn't make it, for their lot, you wouldn't make it work. Cause you have to have pitch away from the house for water to drain away from the house. Where that, where that, you know, comes out 12 feet, where that is, is where the wall starts. So, obviously, if you move the wall any closer to the house, you wouldn't get that pitch.
Okay. And moving a stolen wall 5 feet, it's not an easy task.
Oh, no, these are folded.
No, that was iron-built there with an excavator.
Oh, did he?
It wasn't iron, but it was built by an excavator.
Yeah. Okay. Do you wanna hear from, uh, Mr. Meskis, the zoning enforcement officer?
Kurt Meskis, zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner.
How did this even come about?
I'll tell you a story.
Okay.
You can see the picture of the wall, yeah.
So, Ms. LeBlanc approached me several months before this wall was constructed and said that he needed, that the property needed to have a wall constructed between in and it, and his neighbor, Ms. LeBlanc, is contracted to build the house, as I understand. And the subdivision owner was contracted by the owner of the property to do the site work. I informed Ms. LeBlanc that the retaining wall that he presented to me, which was a two-tier retaining wall, would require engineering and building permit. That went on, as time went on, I saw that the retaining wall was built. It was not a two-tier retaining wall, but it was a single-tier retaining wall. However, a building permit had not been issued, and I had to inform Mr. LeBlanc that I would be unable to issue an occupancy permit for the house because the property would be incomplete. And I could not issue an occupancy because this is a violation because there was no building permit for it. And as part of the building permit application, a site plan was provided that showed that the wall now was in violation of the five-foot setback. So, here we are. We have a house. We have a slope. We have a neighborhood. We have an unpermitted retaining wall. And we have people asking forgiveness rather than following the proper procedure and permitting the wall in the first place. And then the site plan would have been required in the first place, and the need for the setback would have been expressed during the building permit application.
So, if the wall were to be moved within the setback, are there other drainage solutions that would solve the problem besides what we have?
Yeah, stone and pipe for each.
They, you know, I think there is no requirement for retaining wall to be there. The slope could have been sloped from one property to the other without a retaining wall. It would have been a slope that may have required riprap, which would, would not require a building permit, would have held the soil in place and allowed for the drainage from the building. The building code does say that, you know, grade must slope away from the house six inches in the first 10 feet, if possible, per form. But if you couldn't do that, as Mr. Regass suggested, a steeper slope could have been put in and other drainage measures could have been placed. Unfortunately, Mr. LeBlanc here has been stuffed into a hard place because other people involved in this project have mucked it up.
20 feet off the top of the hill would fix it all.
Well, and that, that, I mean, in a comprehensive development proposal, I think that probably should have been considered, how much was cut off of this lot before it was. Because this was not a lot, a, a property, you know, that went like this. It's not a property that went like this before.
You, you don't own this property, do you? You just built the house?
We don't own the property. I wasn't responsible in the site work. The person who did the site work has walked away from it. I built the house. I'm trying to help the people because they can't move into their house. So, that's the only reason I'm here is because he just kinda went like that, and they needed some help.
Okay. Like, he, they did a construction loan to get this. I wasn't, my office wasn't involved in the construction loan, is it? Okay. Just wanna make sure. Cause I don't wanna create a conflict.
Yeah.
If I did the reconstruction closing and didn't realize it.
No.
And I don't, the red name doesn't ring a bell, but I do so many of those.
Well, they got, they, yeah.
Yeah.
They got somebody else.
Okay. Well, that's fine, then, we don't have that.
Yeah.
That, that's my story. That's the story of the...
Yeah. And the unfortunate thing is I can't do anything until September 2nd. What do you think about this?
Well, civil work, there's a lot of different ways to do stuff. A lot of ways around certain stuff, and...
This is an instance where it's, they're asking for forgiveness rather than permission, though, you know?
Yeah.
You know, so...
I mean, I've seen rock walls like this hold up for 30...
Well, he has had, um, uh, an engineer come in.
Yeah.
And approve the wall, that, you know, the wall will work. The wall is fine.
Yeah.
Um, so that has been done.
Yeah.
We did, uh, just today and yesterday, put a fence, fence up across the top of the wall, which is something that needed to be done.
How high is that wall? What is it, like?
5 feet.
5 feet.
How high is the fence?
The fence is a 54-inch.
Not the fence, the wall itself.
The wall, like, I'd probably say 10, like, at its total height. It's all tall.
Yeah, I think, would you say, Kurt, around 8?
Yeah, maybe hang on, we'll need to find it.
The house here. The Jason house is already complete?
Yeah, so it's their house.
Yeah.
And part of what we were trying to do...
You have, you're the one waiting for the occupancy?
No. No.
I live in 76.
He lives in the house next door, so...
Okay.
Part of the issue, Frank, was in doing this, they had already bought their house.
Yeah.
Trying not to encroach on any of their property. At one point, I had brought a, um, a plan to, of a step wall, like you mentioned.
Yeah.
Which encroached onto their property. They were okay with that.
Yeah.
Correct? They were okay with that. And then I don't know why that wall didn't get built. They were okay with that, and then I don't know why that wall didn't get built. It was supposed to, had a drawing, it was supposed to have gotten a permit and built that wall, and it didn't happen.
Like it was permitted for engineered block and stuff?
No, 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 it was, it was supposed to get permitted, so I had just done a sketch, because I was presented this issue. I did a sketch that I thought would solve it, you know, with a, it was four-foot high, five-foot, four-foot, five-foot type situation. And it started on, on their property away from where the pitch needed to be, went to the property line, then actually went a little beyond, onto their property, it was like half and half. They, everybody was okay with that. Bought it to Kurt, he said we needed to get a permit, um, and it had to be engineered. I gave that information.
To the site guy.
To the site guy.
And we never did any about it.
Next thing I know, he's building that wall, and I'm saying, what are you doing? That's, you can't do that, it's not going to be acceptable.
Yeah.
He says, that's all I'm doing, it'll be fine.
So the answer to the question, the tallest point of the wall is approximately eight feet. We have nine, eight ninety-six at the bottom of the wall, and nine oh four at the top of the wall, in the center of the wall. So those two do show they were constructing the fences, Mr. Villa Blank.
Yeah, that's the reason, reason for the fence, that created the, kind of, what is the reason for the fence?
The building.
Well, normally anytime I build a fence, I build a wall, I work, and I've built some pretty tall ones.
Yeah.
Um, we have to fence it for...
Oh, just for, for safety.
People and people falling. It's just a safety thing with the fence.
Yeah. And we, I did go ahead and put the wall in, I mean, the fence in.
Yeah.
To get, make sure it's okay.
So in the event that the board were to approve this, it sounds like there's more steps that have to happen, is that right?
Well, the steps that would have to happen is the building permit application would then be filed.
Which they do have.
Which we, you know, we did, as Ms. Villa Blank says, an engineer has done calculations, provided calculations on the stone as a gravity wall that, according to the engineer, and I have to, you know, unless I can prove him wrong, you know, and from what my research shows, is, is a septic, it's an acceptable wall, it's just, you know, Mr. Villa Blank tried to do the right thing, and he asked if a permit, and what wouldn't be needed, and he did that, but another person has now, as I say, made a kerfuffle out of this. Unfortunately, I'm a man of regulations and...
You have little choice in that man. That's your job.
You have to do the formal part.
Well, let's, um... Yeah, so do you want to, um, we're going to call in Butters or anybody of interest that has anything, do you want to add anything? Are you, you want to just state your name, are you okay with what they're proposing?
So, Christians Brodsky.
Yeah.
Owner of seventy-six Jennings Road. Um, yeah, I, I have no, I have no qualms.
You have no qualms, there's no problems from your side?
From my perspective, no, the, um, and I, you know, the, I know the land regraded, I think the pictures probably show the grade of the, of the lane pass, the tents and everything as well. I assume everything's the code, I, I have no, I have no concept of code, so.
Okay.
Aside from...
But I mean, you're, you have no problems with it at all?
I, I, yeah, otherwise I have no problems, I mean, you know, the, it's, now that it's fenced, I mean, it's a little safer for the kids, obviously, so.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll do all the, the roll call, and then, um, we'll have to, unfortunately, we have to continue until the second. Hopefully we'll have at least one more guy here on the second.
So they can't do anything, you can't move it or anything?
Yeah, that's all I can do, unfortunately, yeah.
So, and I, I'm not sure, I saw something in, in here, do they have to wait, so say it comes to the second, and it's, do they have to wait beyond that, or can they, I mean, I know I got to get the permit, and that's going to get inspected and stuff, is there any other waiting for them besides that?
So usually there's, there's a twenty-day appeal period for the variance after, if it's approved. But I don't know whether or not, that's up to the building inspector's office, if they can take any action or whatever.
Yeah, you guys control occupancy, right?
Yeah.
Wow, there's nothing more permanent than a temporary, so we don't issue temporaries. So...
That's a good way of putting it. Okay, you didn't do it, get out.
That's, that's the thing, so what I would look to is, is the situation at hand, okay, right now, we, we, you know, so the zoning rules say, as you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, that there's a twenty-day appeal period once it's been filed with the, at the registry of deeds. I mean, I wasn't...
Well, courtside.
Filed with the town clerk.
Right.
Um, I think in this case, I would say, well, I'm going to issue this, and the issue would be at risk, that someone would come and file an appeal within the twenty days.
Yeah.
Seeing no one here that's opposed to it, understanding the situation, the whole neighborhood has been notified, I'm sure everybody's well aware of what's going on.
I have no other, yeah, so far, yeah.
We have no correspondence or anything in opposition to this, so, you know, I would grant the occupancy and...
And that's up to his office, that's his, his...
Okay, I just want to pass it on to them.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we'll call, anybody?
Uh, just one other question, there's no impact on my plot of land or anything along those lines, right?
No, so, I mean, the only thing is, if we grant the variance, so typically that wall would need to be five feet from the property line. It's on the property line, so if, that, that means that that is allowed, you know, forever, it stays, so for some reason, in the, you know, twenty or thirty years in the future, they wanted to redo the wall, they could redo it in that spot with no issue at all.
Yeah, as long, as long as it has no impact on...
Yeah, I mean, it's not encroaching on your land at all, it should have no impact. If you were to sell it, I can't imagine...
Any issues in that regard either?
Yeah, you know, sometimes you get these mortgage inspection guys that don't really know where the line is, so they might come in like, well, the fence might be encroaching on the wall, you know, but we know that it's not, and you can just have them refer to this, and say that it's not, and, you know, I would, that's what I'd probably do if, if you sell them the property, uh, in the future. I, I would probably say that would, at least in my mind, that would be the greatest impact, is if you were to do a mortgage inspection plan, because they don't really know exactly where the boundary lines are, that they could highlight that as possibly encroaching.
But as long as this is...
As long as, yeah, you have, you can at least fall back on this if we grant the variance, and say, no, you know, they engineered it, it wasn't encroaching, it's a town chief.
Okay.
All right, so anybody from the planning board, town accountant, conservation, town clerk, selectman, collector, assessor, border health, economic development, senior center, police, fire, school district? Anyone has anything, anyone want to make a motion to continue this until September 2nd?
Motion to continue until September 2nd.
All in favor, say aye, motion carries. We'll see you three weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still waiting for P and P. You want to, do you want to take a short recess? You want a motion to take a short, a recess?
Motion to take a recess.
Second, all in favor, say aye, we're going to recess. Okay, last on the P and P, general contractors, petition for property located three eighteen Southbridge Road. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Robert Petruski, Jr.
All right, so just so you know, um, I have a quorum, but I need a four-fifth vote to grant any relief tonight, and I only have three members here. So no matter what happens, we're, we're going to continue this until the next meeting, which is September 2nd.
Okay.
There's nothing I can, I mean, if I vote, then it's an automatic, because I don't want four people to vote in the affirmative, so it would be considered in denial if we didn't vote.
Okay.
So there's nothing I, there's nothing we can do about that. What will happen is, we'll ask the two missing members this evening to watch the video of the meeting, they'll get all the documentation, review it, and then they'll be brought to speed so they'll be able to vote for the next meeting.
So the next meeting will just be the vote?
Uh, no, I mean, we, we haven't closed any meetings out, uh, the open hearing portion, so that will be up to us at the time. It may just be a vote, it may not be, depends on what the board feels like, I guess, at that time.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so why don't you tell us, we're going to start, we'll go through the thing, why don't you tell us what you're looking to do, and why this board should grant you relief on that?
So, I'm looking to build a twenty-by-forty shed, um, in the northwest corner of my property.
Okay.
The, I, I provided some pictures and a sketch of, of, and plans of where it will go. The way this, the way the lot is sloped, um, there's a plateau and a clearing at that, that area, there's also a driveway that currently goes up to that same, same spot. So I'm requesting relief because I'm, although I'm within the setbacks, I'm in a very inconspicuous spot on the property, the way, the way the lot is shaped, it'd be shielded, the neighbors wouldn't really, um, see the shed, it would be the most kind of shielded spot. If I have to move it away, um, it would require, uh, about eight feet of retaining wall, um, and it would be, you know, elevated eight feet, I'd have to relocate the well, relocate a driveway that accesses the, the shed as well.
So what's there right now, looks like there's some fence?
It's, yeah, it's just a little fenced in, um, call it old garden for backup, you know, it was never really a garden, but it was more of just a sitting area, like a patio area that was fenced in.
So how much, the shed's going to be bigger than that area?
No, that's, that's approximately, that, that footprint is approximately the shed.
The twenty-by-forty area?
Yes.
Now, um, it looks like there's a, there's a well there, there's a, there's a kind of a driveway going to that, what is...
So the driveway goes up, right now, my driveway, um, goes around the back of my building.
Yeah.
Close to the building itself, and then there's a kind of a horseshoe that goes out on the other side of one sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Um, that other driveway continues up and around the well, and goes to that patio area, which is right where I would, would place the shed.
Okay. Is it just going to be a storage shed?
Just a storage shed for...
No, for forty, you didn't really...
Um, like, tools, um, you know, small, like, uh, small equipment that we like to keep inside.
The driveway you have, that's shared with another, a Butter, only not that portion of my, my lot.
Is you exit my lot, or is you exit around the back side of the building?
This is the picture right here, so this is, this is the front of the building, right?
There's the front, yes.
And this is the driveway right there?
That's my main driveway, I own all of this. This section of driveway here that goes back on to one sixty-nine.
Yeah.
That piece right there, this is a shared section.
So the, so the Butter uses this piece of the driveway, they don't use...
They don't use that, they don't have rights to that.
Okay.
We both have rights to this side.
Yeah.
But no, I have rights from that point on.
Okay, all right.
So it doesn't affect, you know, there, our shed.
It won't affect them in any way at all?
We need this shared driveway to get to our, this front walk here.
Okay.
Which is, that's where our septic is as well.
Okay.
So the septic's there, the well's there, and like I said, the reason I, I keep, it's hard to keep the setbacks, is because this, I showed them another, like, a grading plan, but it's about eight feet of grade change between this driveway and that upper walk.
Oh, really? Uh, this goes up?
That goes up.
Right, yeah. Because you're, you're a little bit off one sixty-nine anyways, you're kind of...
We're all already, we're kind of up on the hill, and it continues up.
Right.
From there.
Okay. Jay, do you have any questions right now? Bobby, you have any questions? You want to call the zoning enforcement officer next?
Oh, hi, folks, Kurt Meskis, building commissioner, zoning enforcement officer. How have we been?
Fancy seeing you here.
Hi, oh, I like that. I certainly, I make, I make enough so that we have a few spare, so there you go.
What's next here, LNG?
That's the LNG, isn't it?
Yes, NEC, the LNG tank is, the front of this, where I'm proposing the shed, looks right at a two million gallon.
That's good for target practice.
That's pretty strong.
Yeah.
So, so, um, you know, Mr. Petruski is an industrial general zone, so the setbacks are a little greater, they're thirty-five feet, not the usual fifteen feet that we're used to on-site setbacks in the AR sixteen zone. Right, wow. So, uh, you know, locust plan, you can see the LNG tank under construction at the time, there's also a solar field behind him that property wraps around, the property. Three eighteen Southbridge Road, the two views, the driveway on the right is, as Mr. Petruski says, is wholly his, the driveway on the left, from my understanding, and I think I understand that to Petruski is the neighbor's driveway, but he has access to it, um, through heated rights. If you, uh, come up the driveway, I'm standing, uh, which I'll show you in another, another photo slightly further on, I'll show you where I was standing, but I'm standing there looking at the general area, you can see the picket fence where Mr. Petruski has described the location of the shed, and, um, when I was taking that picture, looking towards the picket fence, the lower picture, about three twenty Southbridge Road, I was standing in front of that building near that stump wall. And then looking down the street, of course, as we all know, the LNG facility, NEC, is there, it's been up and functioning for over a year and a half or so.
It's essentially lower than they originally designed it, isn't it?
No.
I thought, I thought the grade was going to be greater.
No, that isn't one of those projects that they sort of just changed the grade like another project that I've heard of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we just talked about, you know? No, no, because all of that, that plant, just to digress a little bit, all went to Department of Public Utilities and Energy Siding Board, so they had to have everything laid out as, almost exactly as they wa, they...
Yeah.
They, they were going to put it, because it all went into the modeling of dispersion and, you know, so there weren't a lot of...
There wasn't a changes on the...
Very good, thank you.
Okay, um, is this, I have a letter here, is it, either of you, Karen?
That's from the house that you, you got up to, uh...
This is three twenty, is Karen?
Excuse me?
Okay. Okay, so I have a letter written from Karen, she couldn't make it, so I'm just going to read this into the record, I don't know if you have a copy of it. My name is Karen Nolan, I reside at three twenty Southbridge Road, I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the proposed construction of a shed, and I'm unable to attend the upcoming appeal meeting in person, so this submitting is in writing, I'm going to paraphrase a little bit. Her concerns are followed, she doesn't know the intended use of the shed, concerned about potential for it to pose a safety risk to individuals I care for, and to my grandchildren. This is particularly important, given the frequency which they're outside, either waiting for transportation or planning, I would imagine that's to grandkids, not you guys planning.
Those are mentally disabled individuals.
Okay.
She's cared about.
Yeah, yeah. Shared driveways are only part of access to and from the home, it's used by the agency vans, buses, to pick up and drop off the individuals in my care for jobs, day programs. Any increase in traffic, especially large or additional vehicles, raises safety concerns, particularly when children or individuals with disabilities are present. Additional use of the driveway by heavy vehicles may result in damage, since this is my only access to my home, any damage to the driveway would significantly impact my ability to provide care and carry out essential daily activities. Cost of repairing such damage would pose serious financial burden. There's also an alternate driveway on the opposite side of the main building that can be used, utilized instead. My property value has already declined, I'm concerned that additional structures or changes, such as this shed, may further decline. One question I do have based on that, the, you, you would have the ability to access that shed from either driveway, correct?
That's correct, it would actually, the way that we would access it would be the opposite driveway, would not be the shared, shared driveway. Um, that, if you conceal.
I can see, yeah, yeah.
The dri- the continuation is of my driveway on the, um, L G side of the property, so it goes straight up.
There's no really need to use the.
None whatsoever.
The, uh, the shared driveway to access that shed in any way.
That's correct. And this is not.
Accessing a shared driveway ain't gonna affect, I mean, access in a shed's not gonna affect someone's driveway. Especially when they have the right to use it.
No, I mean, yeah, that's another whole other.
Wouldn't have no effect.
Yeah.
And this is by no means like a, uh, active storage, like, that we're going in and out of every day. At most, we typically have two to three people at the office. This is for, uh, when we, when we build projects, you know, we have office trailers, and we have like furniture that has to be utilized in office trailers. When we don't have office trailer, we have desks and chairs and.
Oh, that's, you're gonna store, it's not like you're storing like jackhammers or?
No, I mean, there may be some small tools as well, but no, it's mostly, um, paperwork, office equipment. Um, like, we have like two small pumps and things that we don't leave outside, but this is, this is, uh, temp lighting, like rolled up, you know, extension cords with the bulbs on, things like that.
Yeah.
So it's not things that, one, we're using on a daily basis, a mon- not even a monthly basis, it's, it's usually, we're gonna go set up a job, and we.
Take all the stuff for the job, that's, that's six months or a year, and.
Yes.
And then, you know, have another one like it for another three months or whatever, and you just need a place to put that stuff.
Exactly.
Okay.
Um, so there shouldn't be, there wouldn't be any increased, you know, traffic or even my other employees coming to and from the site. And if we are accessing it, it would be from the opposite side, so it shouldn't, um, affect our neighborhood at all.
Didn't matter. Um, so here, um, do you wanna, your butters or neighbors?
We're next to us down, three twenty-four.
We're three twenty-four, so.
Okay. All right, so do you, um, you wanna just state your name for a record, and you have any comments or questions to ask the board?
My name is Ed Downs, I live at three twenty-four, Southbridge Road. And as far as the driveway, the shared driveway, that's used ninety percent of the time now, it's very rare.
So you wanna, you wanna just ask us?
Okay.
Yeah.
Very rare.
Yeah.
That anything goes out that, in or out the other driveway.
Okay.
The only time, I've been there since ninety-nine.
Yeah.
And basically, the only time I saw that other driveway used was for a renter upstairs.
Okay.
Who hasn't been rented for years.
Yeah.
That I know of. And now, I wish the people were here that made some of these remarks, but I know the gas plant supposedly is paying rent at P and P, three eighteen. And if that driveway were to be used on a regular basis, cause I was led to the impression that the reason they wanted the twenty by forty foot shed was for the gas plant.
Okay.
Now, these were from individuals from the gas plant. So how true would, I don't know, they don't show up, so.
Right. They didn't show up when they were, before they were building it either, by the way.
Right. And we're here because we did receive a letter in the mail.
Yeah.
Um, and.
So you, are you just concerned that they're gonna use, that, that they would access it through the shared driveway versus the extra, the, the driveway there? Or what other concerns do you, do you have?
The only other concern was if it involves the gas plant.
Yeah.
What would they be storing in that shed? Furniture, I.
Yeah, but it's already stated, it doesn't have anything to do with the gas plant.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I mean, if they were gonna store hazardous materials and then, I would hope that they would, you know, contact the fire department, and, cause they're in charge of all that stuff. Yeah, and then, and I have no, like, the, this board doesn't really have authority to say, well, you know, you can store hazardous materials and, like, it's, you know, it's whatever. If, if you're gonna build a shed, it's whatever normal shed uses that, you know, we would. If they were gonna do something above and beyond that, then it would be up to the fire department to kind of come in, and, and then they would be there, that's their domain, their territory.
Right.
Not ours.
Kind of the same thing with the, the shared driveway and the usage of it, that has no bearing on what we're gonna decide or do.
Yeah.
And no, and not at all.
You know, realistically, on a twenty by forty shed, I mean, I guess you could probably put some pretty big stuff in there, but it's not like it's, like, y- you know, it's not a, a, um, you know, a huge warehouse that you would need heavy trucks to come in and out of that, you know? How, what could you, you know, how, how a heavy truck, what could you really put in there on a regular basis?
Like, you're just built a five by four.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look at the, just not to interrupt, and maybe just to address, but if you look at the driveway that goes up to where this is proposed, you can fit a single, you couldn't, you can't fit, uh, a big truck, you couldn't fit a UPS truck up there.
This is the one on the.
Very tight, on the, the, the small driveway that goes up to access the location of the shed.
You couldn't fit a big truck behind the property, is that?
No, you can fit in the, in my, the main, you, it goes around, you can, you know, UPS trucks and.
Yeah.
Not, not a, not a trailer truck, but a UPS, a straight body truck can go around.
Yeah.
But to access the small driveway that moves up to the location of the shed, it's, it's very steep and a tight turn, you, you could barely back a pickup truck up to it.
Oh, okay.
Now, what is stored in this shed?
Um, same type of equipment, um, I have lighting in there, I have, um, some temper heaters, um, ladders, um, and I think some, uh, halogen lights for, you know, temp lighting inside jobs.
Right, now, the, the new shed that you wanna build, I mean, I gotta tell you, that gas plant is enough to look in, especially in the wintertime, when there's no leaves on the trees.
So where this is?
Are we gonna be able to see that shed and maybe more sheds that you're gonna look?
No, if I, if I'm required to put the shed, uh, thirty-five feet off the property line, you may see it.
And that, we might see it?
Absolutely, but if I keep it where it is, why not? Because I need to, I, if, if you can see my driveway, or you can see this shed, if I need to move it twenty, thirty-five feet out, it's gonna bring it closer to that. Right now, it's in the far back corner of the property where you can see. Can I use, could I keep one out of the window? So, here's the small driveway that goes up to it, this is where I'm proposing to place it, and that's the problem. If I need to move it all the way up here, this is the, this is route one sixteen.
Oh, okay, see it from the property.
Okay, so here's my driveway on the, here's the gas plant. This little driveway that turns up, this is where I wanna place it. It's tucked in this corner right here, and like you can see in this picture where the fence is, it's all the way up against the tree line.
Mm-hmm.
And there's all large holders all around here, it should be right up to it.
Okay.
Now, if I need to move it thirty-five feet, that means that it's gonna be, I'm gonna build a retaining wall to you, and it's gonna be suspended, it's gonna be an ISO for it.
Yeah, so at least right here, it's.
And that gas plant.
That's why I, that's why I proposed that location.
It almost blocked the gas.
We, unfortunately, the town didn't have much of a set.
Well, I do feel that they, um.
If I need to move it out.
I have proposed to some, to build it at offer twenty somewhere.
I asked to build it here, I don't remember.
No, I was under the impression that.
It's a long story.
And, you know, at nighttime, this time, so I think the furnace is on.
So, well, I'm just trying to fuck it up, far corner. Right here. The plant, where that fence is.
I did have to check the furnace, make sure nobody turned it on, it, it's awful.
Yeah. All right, um, so we're, uh, we're gonna call, uh, the other boards, see if anybody else, or anybody from the planning board, accountant, conservation, clerk, selectmen, assessors, collectors, border health, economic development, senior center, police, fire, school district, anybody? All right, so you wanna make a motion to continue this?
Make the motion to continue to September second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, so, thank you, we'll see you in three weeks.
All right.
So, if you wanna come back on the second, if you're more than willing to, we'll probably have a vote.
When did, you guys live next door to Karen?
Yeah.
When did Karen, I, cause I knew she lived somewhere else, this, how long has she lived there?
Oh, maybe at least a couple of years.
Couple of years now, okay.
I, I don't know.
She was on the outside of town for, last time I knew.
About six years, maybe, I think.
Yeah.
Six?
All right.
Isn't about six?
Uh, you wanna approve the minutes, you, you're all, you, you guys are all set?
Okay.
Um, or, anyone wanna, uh, approve the minutes from, um, May sixth?
Motion to approve the minutes on May sixth.
Uh, second on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other business that we need to check about tonight that was not on the agenda? Okay, motion to.
Motion to approve.
Make the motion in the meeting tonight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.